Okay, we will call this meeting to order on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. Uh, Councilmember Sanchez, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
In the VRs, please. I pledge allegiance to the.
All right, could we please have roll call, Linda?
Councilmember Hornick. Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis, here, and Mary Silva.
Here. And is there any reordering of the agenda?
None this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to public comment for any items that are not agendized on the meeting tonight, and tonight we have one public comment from Mr. Scott Harvey.
Thank you for letting me speak, uh, City Council Mayor Silva. Anyway, this is, I was, uh, very disappointed in the City Council's meeting of seven twenty-four vote in favor of the hundred. Hill schools on the Williamson property. The outcome is troubling from the perspective of representative government. I'd like to acknowledge Mayor Mayor David Silva, who appeared genuinely concerned with constituents' views, but I did not see the same level of responsiveness from the rest of the council. Based on the public comments I observed while watching the meeting on YouTube, a significant number of community members opposed the project. Many speakers emphasized that public land should not be used for a private function and expressed a long desire for the Williamson property to remain as open space parkland accessible to the community. Others raised legitimate issues about increased traffic and related impacts. It's also too important to note that the planning commission vote result in a two-to-two tie, further reflecting community division and significant opposition. Community members tallies of public comments indicated thirty-seven speakers opposed the project while only eighteen supported it. Of those supporting community members, analysis suggested that approximately only three were Bealton resident. While I'm happy that the land will not be developed into a fast food restaurant like Taco Bell or an ice facility, the approval of this plan still disregarded the clear preferences of many Bealton constituents. Apart from the council member, Mayor Silva, it appeared to me that the council ignored the community's voice. This division is a broader, in the broader context of national politics, presents a concerning image for local democracy. For future matter matters, I strongly urge council to place greater weight on the whether speakers are local constituents when quantifying public opinion on controversial issues. When contacting state or federal representative, constituents are required to identify themselves as such. Our local process should reflect a similar standard, although allowing for constituents to redact their identity while vetting their address with a trusted city official. And that's pretty much it. Got the rest of the letters. I, I plan to, you know, speak on the next city council meeting, which is now, so. Um, do I leave this letter with?
Yeah. Just leave with our city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harv.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? And then do we have anyone online?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar at this time. Tonight, we have the items of minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, monthly treasures report July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and consideration of proclamation in honor of National Voter Registration Day, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any items like to be moved or may entertain a motion?
I move to approve.
One second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mary Silva.
Hi. Moving along tonight, we do have a presentation for the proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month. So whereas every year from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, Americans celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month by recognizing the history, heritage, and contributions of Hispanic, Hispanics and Latinos to our community and nation, and whereas Observation of Hispanic Heritage Week started in nineteen sixty-eight under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was later extended to a thirty-day celebration by President Ronald Reagan, and whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans have made immeasurable contributions to our culture and economy and have been integral to the prosperity and enrichment of Bealton and the United States. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month allow also allows us to honor and celebrate the key leadership roles and accomplishments of Latinos and Hispanics in our community in different professions and sectors and at all levels of government. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Silva, mayor of the city of Bealton, and on behalf of the entire Bealton City Council, encourage Bealton residents to observe Hispanic Heritage Month with appropriate programs and activities and do hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month presented this eleventh day of September twenty twenty-five, and we are very fortunate to have a few people who'd like to speak today, so thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having us today. My name is Diana Cepeda, and this is.
Ariana Beas.
And we come from a, a new founded nonprofit organization called Centro Corazon Comunitario. I'm a proud resident of Bealton since I was eight, when we arrived from Mexico. And Ariana recently arrived, uh, from Mexico as well, so she's learning English. So she's here with me. So we would like to read a little bit our mission statement, uh, for Centro Corazon Comunitario. As we said, it's a new founded nonprofit organization made up of, um, a few members of, of the community. Okay, so Centro Corazon Comunitario is a grassroots community organization that aims to provide comprehensive wraparound and essential services to immigrants and their families. The purposeful programming engages them and empowers the community to actively participate in the various branches. Education, culture, culture, mental health, finance, entrepreneurship, workforce development, family, and legal services. The Centro Corazon Comunitario's goal is to leverage the richness of our immigrant community and available resources uh, to improve the lives of immigrants in northern Santa Barbara County. So that's, that's kind of our, our mission, but on behalf of the board, we would like to share a little bit about, um, what Hispanic Heritage Month means to us. Okay, at Centro Corazon Comunitario, we don't just observe Hispanic Heritage Month, we live it every single day. This month is national recognition, yes. But for us, it's personal. It's about honoring our very own, those who built our neighborhoods, who raised families with courage and corazón. Our vision is rooted in the belief that every immigrant deserves access to support, dignity, and opportunity. And Hispanic Heritage Month reminds us that our heritage is not something to be preserved in the past. It's a living force that shapes our present and our future. We celebrate the abuelas who carry ancestral wisdom, the youth who navigate two languages, which was my case, and two worlds with grace, and the workers who build, feed, and sustain our communities. This month is also a call to action. It changes, it challenges us to ensure there are services, our organization's services, whether in education, mental health, entrepreneurship, or legal support are not just available, but culturally rooted and community-led. It reminds us that bilingual access, it's, it's, isn't courtesy, it's a necessity. At Centro Corazon Comunitario, we don't just serve the Hispanic community, we are the Hispanic community. And this month, we, uh, commit to our mission to empower, to uplift, and to build a future where every immigrant feels safe, seen, supported, and celebrated. Thank you for being here. Gracias por estar aquí. Es un honor. It's an honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Would you be open for a photo at this time?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, we love a good photo. Oh, did you want to speak?
In, in Spanish. It's okay.
Okay, so then let's have you take a photo with us if you wouldn't mind joining us up here.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we'll go into public hearings at this time.
We have no public hearings this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go into council, council member comments and items tonight. Uh, Councilmember Sanchez.
Uh, I wanted to, um, thank Pam Nico for, uh, inviting us to the, um, the event this weekend, uh, the Operation Outreach, and it was, uh, fun, and I think it raised a lot of money, and it was, uh, an honor to be out with, uh, with everybody, and I just want to thank her. And also, I wanted to thank, uh, I guess, uh, yesterday, we had to lower flags. Uh, I heard on the radio and about a half an hour later, they were already down, and I just wanted to thank the staff for jumping on that yesterday. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
No.
Okay, I have a few items here for it. Um, so also thank you again for coming this evening. I'm very excited to know that you'll be a Bealton organization, so we're really grateful to have you be part of this. Um, I wanted to just, I know we should take a moment to with the sake of we're having a council meeting on September eleventh, so I think that just a moment of silence might be due for that. I should have done at the very beginning of that, but if we could just have a moment of silence to respect what we are meeting on on the day of the anniversary. Thank you very much. Um, a few items I just wanted to bring up is, uh, one that's kind of come up to throughout the conversation is that we have had a lot of news coming through, uh, in the city, so we've had slurry going on, and we've had, um, the, I know the demolition over on two forty-six, so I really appreciate to our city manager for getting that out through the Bealton Engage. But I think that as we move into this space and having a lot more things taking place, I know at one point we discussed the option of how our website could be more functional and useful for contact and outreach and overall functionality, and so I was curious if the council would be open to having our city manager take a look at looking at RFPs for how we could get a better website, because to my understanding, our website requires content updates to be sent to someone to then be updated on our website, correct?
Not for everything, but for a lot of things, yeah.
So I just want to ask when our last website was purchased?
Don't.
Or who, when that?
Which decade, which era?
Okay, so it's, we're talking in decades.
Yeah.
Okay, so at least maybe just to see if there'd be a, a functional space that, uh, better website products are out there. I'm wondering if the council would be open to having the city manager explore that, so we could have a responsive website for twenty twenty-five, or at least two thousand five would be a nice change of pace, too.
I thought, who manages the website now?
Um, it's managed through Mike, Mike Bogus and, yeah, Park Central Websites. And, um, he lives in Los Libos and he, and Pro Sandrati, I don't know, Pro, so they, they designed it.
And what, what does that, does that cost us money?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's significant, you know, I'm guessing between ten and twenty thousand, could be more than that.
There are, there are different, there are different products I've discussed with them before, different, uh, product types that would allow better functionality. But if we're gonna look at that, we really should, we should go out for a proposal and see what other, uh, options are out there.
No, but it would, gonna cost money to get in, to ask for an estimate, we'll have to get a, to do an RFP, we'll have to.
We'll, we'll prepare the RFP at the staff level here. We won't spend any money on your.
Okay. I appreciate it.
So are we okay with that for an RFP to kind of explore our options?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, and then we did have another request. I was able to attend Native Skate Day over on the, uh, at the Chumash Reserve reservation, and, um, it was brought to our attention that they are interested in partnering with us more and wanting to provide some art and some banners and kind of further celebrate and bring some of their cultural heritage here, and so they had asked if we would be open to, I know we had, um, acknowledged, I believe, Indigenous People Day at one point, but Native American Month is in November, and they were curious about a partnership with that, and if we could explore adding them to our, um, list of recognized, um, events, invite them over here to talk and kind of share about that. So if we were okay with that, it'd be great to get them onto our agenda at this time, if that's okay with everyone.
What is the title again?
Native American Month, which is the month of November. They'd be interested to bring some art and banners to the, the avenue and just kind of empower some of their children on, children in their community organizations to share their art with us.
Yeah, the Super Bowl.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, then final two, I'm moving through it quickly, I promise. Um, one item that's come to our attention, too, is as we're working with the Thousand Trees Initiative, um, we've had some discussion about tree canopy, urban canopy, what is in our code, what is not in our code, and so I'm wondering if at some point we could have a discussion just about what our canopy requirements are at a code level for trees and what are our exemptions and all of that, and so um, I know Councilmember Hornick is not here at this time, but it's something he's been very passionate about, and I was just hoping to see if we could get that agendized for a conversation to just explore what are our requirements for trees and ensure that it's up to date with what we're looking to do.
Maybe this would be a topic for a kind of a deep dive kind of an item, just a informational opportunity to ask questions, kind of let the public know what our standards are.
It'd be nice to, for us, we have that opportunity to, that as we're looking for, I know that he would really like to get some traction going with that, that if we started a baseline of understanding what the city code is, it would be able for him then to, and us as a group, especially if we let you go to the public for more tree planting, it'd be nice to have a baseline of understanding, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah. That'd be a good idea.
And then finally, I want to thank our city manager and city staff who brought the communication board to the Riverview Park for, uh, communication with that for nonver. Really able residents, um, some feedback we've already received since putting that up at Riverview Park has been about making it, uh, multilingual, about adding, um, braille to it as well for children and things, and so I just wanted to kind of let the city council know and see if it's still, uh, um, if it's of our prerogative to work to expand that to all the other playgrounds we have. I know that the cost was pretty marginal, well within your, your spending limit, but, um, the goal is to kind of put in a board, get the feedback from the community, evolve the next board, and provide the learnings we have. We've had some of our, we have a lot of actually special education teachers here in the city who are providing great feedback for that, so I just wanted to put it on our radar and make sure that that is in alignment with everyone that as we worked towards try, try getting a communication board at every playground, we just allow it to evolve and grow with that, and I really want to thank Marco, Marco was the one who created the.
Book of Rubies.
Yes, he was the one who created the frame that held it, and you could see the love and care he did, so I just really want to thank him for all of his work to build the one that's at Riverview Park, been a great asset for that.
So, um, I actually went with my, uh, my granddaughter, and she went and played with it, and it was a, it was a nice addition to the park. And I don't think who put that together was a nice job. Looks good. Thank you.
Perfect, so, um, yes, we'll move along with that. Okay, that's all I had. All right, moving along to written communications.
None this evening.
All right, uh, do we have any committee reports? Councilmember Sanchez?
No, no reports, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
No reports, just that we are in the scheduling process of, um, uh, company, the joint use with the Bealton School District for the next meeting, just in the schedule, we haven't had one yet.
Um, there's three items for mine, was, I, I forgot, should have been in comments, but I just had here, a thank you to, um, the city manager for attending when it says it late to for the Polo Village ribbon cutting, which we were able to celebrate the opening for that and everything going on there. Was able to attend SB CAG, and the main update from that is that the train contract is moving along as we're dealing with a, uh, state and national mergers taking place far above everyone's pay grade. So the goal for the additional train services to take place from south in the Ventura, Oxnard, Thousand Oaks area to Santa Barbara and Galita is goal to start that will be at the beginning of twenty twenty-six, and they're coordinating with shuttle options for employers like Cottage and the, uh, um, industrial corridors in Galita for getting shuttles from the train stations to the places of business, so they have options for train service that range from like a, a one week pass to a monthly unlimited pass, so if people are looking for train service southbound into Galita, they're gonna expand that further. And then for APCD, we are adding low-cost air sensors as an option, so their big priority is to get it at, um, schools primarily, and there is a kind of gap of data in the valley, so if you have, have connections to a school, it'd be great to submit an app or just to let them know about the fact that there are options for getting low-cost air sensors that kind of contribute to, um, monitoring overall air quality, so that's the goal now. All right, moving along, we'll now go to, um, our business items, and tonight we have one business item, which is item six, authorization to reclassify the administrative assistant to administrative assistant deputy city clerk and staff assistant planning technician to planning assistant code enforcement officer. And our staff contact is city clerk, H R Director Linda Reed.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, this personnel item before you tonight is customary when job classifications have changed substantially. Uh, that is the case for administrative assistant position and our planning technician position. Uh, due to staff changes in the upcoming year, the two positions mentioned will be taken on additional duties, and therefore, the job description should be renamed and updated to reflect the changes. The new titles will be administrative assistant slash deputy city clerk and planning assistant slash code enforcement officer. The revised job descriptions are attached in the packet for reference. There will also be a slight, uh, fiscal impact associated with this item as we have added in addition, we've added additional duties to each position, so we increase the pay for each position by ten percent for a total increase of seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Our finance director has confirmed that the increase can be covered by the current general fund operating surplus, so no budget, budgetary amendment is necessary. Staff recommends that the council authorize the two new classifications or reclassifications, adopt the associated job descriptions, and the revised salary schedule. And that could include staff, staff's report, and we're available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Do we have any council member questions, Councilmember Sanchez?
Yeah, um, the code enforcement position, how many hours a week is that? Said, I mean, is that's, that's not a forty-hour-a-week job, is it?
No, the code enforcement position had been previously, um, uh, filled as part, as halftime of a full-time position, the other part of that was, was, uh, finance oriented. So when our code enforcement officer, uh, and finance technician recently retired, um, that duty has, has been picked up by the planning technician, so it's, it, it can be twenty-plus hours a week, or it could be, you know, ten to fifteen to twenty, uh, but it, it is, um, either way we look at it, it's a substantial increase to the duties of the, uh, of the planning technician.
But does the planning or the, uh, code enforcement officer go look for?
Yes, uh-huh. They, he does proactive patrol at least once a week, uh, he responds to, um, uh, complaints that come in and goes and investigates that during the week. That's pretty typical, and then all of the, the report writing, the documentation, the coordination with the city attorney's office when that's necessary.
Well, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
I just want to clarify, this is not the position you currently hold, this is the one that like assists and supports your position. And you're making sure that with your succession and, and retirement plan that there's someone fully trained and capable to do the things you do.
Correct.
How I was reading it, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, but it's more administrative slash deputy city clerk, so that there is a backup person, um, to do the city clerk work. Um, while the person that will take my position is off going to conferences and learning and all they need to, to learn to get the CMC. A lot of conference, um, attendance is required to get that CMC, and so you really need a backup person to do that work, um, as well as I had mentioned, you know, doing the H R and the city clerk is, is kind of a, a bigger scope, so at least having a backup person to make sure packets are done and meetings are attended, so you all can have your meetings and everything works properly is a good idea.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
And then my only question was just kind of in back in terms of, I know we just had our code enforcement officer retire, was that F T E position reassigned elsewhere, or is that being kind of absorbed out?
Being absorbed, we've got the part-time position going to finance, and then the other part-time position, the code enforcement portion going to.
Okay, so yeah, so it's kind of in alignment with the culture of Bealton's done with city staff of the, the lean, the lean team.
Wearing multiple hats as opposed to creating more positions for things.
And then is the ten percent increase to it, is that viewed as appropriate from a, uh, uh, equity standpoint in terms of how the other cities have handled this?
Um, you know, I don't, don't know that other cities have exactly what the position, the hybrid that we are creating, um, it's, it's sort of a, um, unique to Bealton, because we have twenty employees. Um, but Scott and I discussed it and thought that it was appropriate, you know, with the ten percent adding those duties on, because it's not a full-time, it's not, it's, it's as needed and, and doing the job, um, as needed, but, but there's, there's some leeway there to be able to, you know, do the administrative roles, do the deputy city clerk roles every two weeks, the same as the code enforcement. A lot of code enforcement doesn't have to be done immediately that day, it can wait, you know, a couple of days, so there's some flexibility there to be able to kind of rearrange a schedule and, and make things work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any public comment for this?
Uh, no.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for, uh, discussion and a possible motion. I don't know if anyone had any specific comments on this. I am grateful to the fact that it is a fiscally thoughtful strategy to have in terms of, I like the idea of providing additional compensation to staff members as they want, look for retention and growth, and if there's a savings by the sake of not having another full-time position, so I am grateful to you guys for being, thinking outside the box and allowing staff who are hungry for additional duties to, um, have the chance to do so.
Do two jobs.
I think it's also important in terms of succession planning, when you've had someone that's been there for many years and is the staple of the place, you forget or you don't realize how much they know and do, and getting somebody new in, it takes that many years to get to that same expertise level, so I think it's a wise decision, so that we don't burn people out, trying to get them up to speed and doing all the things that you do, because you, you can't, you can't expect the same productivity, the same knowledge, the same, all of those things, so I think it's wise.
Yeah, and we, and we'll be, um, you know, we've got ten months or so to do that, so, you know, as of, um, January, I'll have Kat, um, who will take this role.
It's like twenty-two, seven?
If only.
Right?
But she'll start doing packets, and I'll start reviewing them, and she'll start coming to council meetings and start doing all the things and just really getting adjusted and, and, you know, immersed in a lot of the different things, and and I'm, I'm trying to include her in everything, because there's, there's a lot, you know, and, and once you do it once or twice, it's like, okay, I got this, and she'll, she'll do great, she's quick, and, and, um, yeah, she's, she's awesome. You know, you're lucky to have her. And Devin as well, same to him.
I would make a, a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Great.
Great. Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
And Mary Silva.
Hi.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Couple items really quickly for you. As you're aware, uh, the, uh, fourth district city council election took place, uh, at the end of August. Uh, we are awaiting certification of that election, uh, the certification from the county elections division should be received tomorrow. Uh, we're not sure exactly what time that will come in, but we've been told tomorrow is a good bet. If it does not happen, or if it does, either way, I will put out word to the city council on that. Given the timing on that, we are anticipating the seating of our new city council member to take place at the next regular city council meeting, which would be, uh, September twenty-fifth. Um, we have kind of a large agenda for that meeting, um, it might even get larger, but we will anticipate the seating of a council member and possibly the selection of a planning commissioner as well at that meeting. And lastly, just on the topic of meetings, I'd like to remind the city council that due to the upcoming League of California Cities Annual Conference, the first meeting in October, uh, which is the eighth, I believe, will be canceled, um, leaving the second meeting in October as the only meeting in October, and, uh, there will be one meeting per month for October, November, and December, given the holiday schedule, so, um, there will be some, um, you may see a difference in the length of meetings from what we are used to having now versus what we will have over the next couple of months, particularly October, November, as we try and finish things up before, uh, uh, our December meeting, which is primarily ceremony. our December meeting, which is primarily ceremonial, so uh, just fair warning to you, that's concluding my reporting, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, um, it looks like it's time to move into closed session. Wow, we really went through this, guys, congratulations, that was a fast one. So uh, yeah, would you like to lead, read us into closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so closed session is pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight for real property negotiations.
All right, thank you so much, so we will close regular meeting at six thirty, wait for the off, or the area to close, um, empty out, and then we'll begin closed session, so thank you all.